We'll call the Wilmer City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 18th at 6:00 PM to order. As a matter of public information, Councilmember Osmus is attending remotely, and we currently have our public hearing presentation up on the screen at the conclusion of the public hearing, which is item number nine on our agenda. We will switch over so that you will be able to see Councilmember Osmus and City Attorney Scott. If that connection does not go smoothly, we will take a short recess so that IT staff can reboot the computer. We apologize for any inconvenience. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Blaueman. Nelson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the father for which it stands, my nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Do you have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does pass. Next, we have consent items. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda we have for council's approval: The City Council minutes of January 3rd, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of January 10th, a resolution for the Airport Maintenance and Operations Grant Contract, a resolution for the minor subdivision of Matthew Timothy House to split parcel, a resolution for Public Works International Truck Purchase with Snow Removal Equipment, reappointments to boards and commissions of Cody Miller, Dan O'Meara, and David Little to the Airport Commission, building for council's acceptance, the building report for the month of December 2021, and council's information, the appointment to the Rice Hospital Board of Michael May, M.D.
Have you approved the consent agenda items?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to pull item H.
Item H. Anything else? All items except item number H. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want clarification. I know when we operated Rice Hospital ourself, we allowed one person that was not, did not live in the city limits, but they were a medical person. Is that the same now even though we rent out the hospital to Charis Health?
Yes, that's correct. That's what I've been told.
All right. It's everything I needed. Any other questions? I move to file.
I don't, Mr. Scott, I believe that to be a true statement. Can you offer some insight on that? I was told that that individual did not need to reside in the city. Is that correct?
That is my recollection, Mayor, members of the council. And the question about the hospital board, I mean, the composition is basically the same. Its role shifted to more oversight of Charis under the lease the city entered into, but the hospital board continues to exist in the same form. And I think a couple non-voting members, representatives of Charis and Centricare, may have been added. But the basic structure as it existed before the lease continues. The function of the board itself has changed a little bit.
All right. Thank you. I move to file. Those minutes.
Second.
Motion to file the recommendation for the appointment to Rice Hospital Board of Dr. Michael May. Motion been made and discussed, uh, seconded. Discussion. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have open forum. We have items for, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak? There is nobody?
No, Mr. Mayor. No one signed up for that.
Okay. Next then, we will have our hearing for our street improvement program. And I'll call Jared Bogie with Bolton and Mink for our report. For the council's information, we do need seven affirmative votes to pass this. If you have questions to where you feel that you may want to hold this over until a later time to vote, certainly let us know that prior to when we would take the vote so that we don't have to republish. I did talk with the city attorney earlier today, and because we do have a council member that notified us late today that he would not be attending, that means that we do have to have seven affirmative votes by charter in order for this to pass. So with that, I'll turn it over, I'll open the public hearing and turn it over to Bolton and Mink for their presentation. Jared.
Hey, good evening, Mayor Council. As the mayor indicated, this is the public hearing for the improvements associated with the 2022 construction projects. The project area, as shown on the screens there, consists of three primary project areas or project types: Reconstruction, parking lots and overlays. The reconstruction projects are noted there on the screen in the purplish color, and they consist of 13th Street Southwest from Litchfield Avenue to Trot, Litchfield Avenue Southwest from 13th Street to approximately 11th Street, and then 6th Street Southwest from 19th Avenue to Wilmer Avenue, and then east, just off of 6th Street, to 17th Avenue Southwest, along with Charlotte Street Southeast from Johanna to Becker and Industrial Drive Service Road. The parking lots contemplated for improvements in 2022 consists of Sperryville Park, the Fire Department, and 7th Street. Overlay areas include three different areas: First Street or Business 71 from 13th Avenue to 23rd Street, 26th Avenue on the north side of town; 19th Street or Lakeland Drive from First Street to Wilmer Avenue; and then finally 7th Street from Park Avenue to 15th Avenue. Items that were evaluated as part of the feasibility study that was conducted for the improvements for 2022 and the project considerations for the specific streets that have been identified for improvement consist of the sanitary sewer. The existing pipe is clay tile or concrete pipe. It is definitely prone to inflow and infiltration. The, ultimately what that is, is it means that groundwater is getting the sanitary sewer and ultimately going to the wastewater plant. The wastewater plant is essentially treating that clean water that gets into the pipes. Brick and block manholes, those are manholes that were physically constructed by individual bricks and blocks built. The new standard, or the current standard, industry standard, is precast concrete structures. Water main throughout the project areas in the reconstruction area is cast iron pipe. Cast iron pipe is prone to water main breaks specifically at the ages that we're referring to here. And then the storm sewer system, one item that did come out of the study or the analysis, indicated that there are storm sewer network in the reconstruction project areas. Some of those areas are deficient, meaning that a significant amount of street flows over land to catch basins and during not even large rain events, ponding occurs on the roadway. So that was identified as a deficiency. And then the street condition itself, which is obviously the most noticeable with cracks, potholes, and settlements within the street. Street improvements, as I mentioned, two different types of street improvements: Reconstruction and overlays. In the reconstruction specifically, the total street section is redone, and ultimately what that means is all the bituminous, all the gravel is removed. The utility work is done underneath it, and then that whole entire section is built back up. Concrete curb and gutter would also be removed, and the sidewalk that currently exists on these projects will be replaced in the same location. There's no sidewalks that is being proposed to be eliminated or additional sidewalk added. So pretty straightforward from the sidewalk perspective. And then in the overlay areas, the primary difference is that not all of the bituminous gets removed. It's just the top three inches. That three inches gets put back on and creates a much more smoother, smoother surface and eliminates the potholes and cracking. The, within the overlay areas, there are some locations where the curb and gutter has deteriorated to the point that it needs to be replaced. So individual spot repairs will be made before that final lift of bituminous is put back on to take care of those settlements and things like that with the curb and gutter. The proposed improvements within the reconstruction areas: A sanitary sewer, new sanitary pipe, new services to all the properties that currently have services, along with new precast manholes that I spoke to just a minute earlier. Water main, again, new pipes, new valves, new hydrants, new services. And then the storm sewer, again, new pipes and structures with that. So essentially, all the pipes associated with all three utilities: sanitary sewer, water main, and storm sewer will be replaced in the structures that they connect to as part of a reconstruction project. 13th Avenue and Litchfield Southwest, this is essentially a map of the sanitary sewer improvements, and ultimately what it shows is the existing sanitary sewer that is in place will be replaced with new piping. Similarly, for the water main improvements on that same street, water main that currently exists will be replaced in its existing location. There may be some adjustments to valves and hydrant locations, but ultimately, what's there is going back in as part of the project. 13th and Litch Storm Sewer, you'll note that we have identified the need for some additional storm sewer at the intersection of 13th and Litchfield Avenue. That is one of those areas where I talked about earlier where the streets drain a long ways down to catch basins, and it creates ponding in the street, which ultimately leads to quicker pavement deterioration. The faster you can get the water off the street, the better off the street will be in terms of life expectancy. So there is some storm sewer that has been identified for addition there. Typical sections for 13th and Litch. Ultimately, what this shows is the proposed street width. That's noted by the 40 feet F-F, and what that means is face to face. So basically, from your curb to your curb, 13th Street Southwest would be 40 feet. I did want to mention that these street widths are being proposed to be replaced generally to the same width as they exist today within a foot or two. So not a lot of, people won't notice a difference in the street width out there. Four inches of pavement, six inches of gravel, 12 inches of sand. And that's what that pavement section, as I, as I mentioned earlier, that gets removed, that gets put back in after the utility work is done. And then Litchfield Avenue being 38 feet face to face. Moving on to the second reconstruction project identified: 6th Street Southwest and 17th Avenue Southwest. This ultimately just gives a layout of the sanitary sewer improvements, going back in as they exist today. Water main improvements in that same project area, going back in its current configuration. And then the drainage improvements, which is a storm sewer, have identified a bit of additional storm sewer north and south of the 15th Avenue intersection for that project area. Typical section, again, similar to the one that you just saw: Four inches of bituminous, six inches of gravel, 12 inches of sand. That's the city's standard street section for all streets within the city. And 6th Street is proposed to be 38 feet wide, which is essentially the same width as it exists today. Third reconstruction area, Charlotte Street Southeast, illustrating the sanitary sewer improvements. Again, nothing, no changes there other than the new piping as we discussed. The water main improvements, you'll notice that the water main highlighted between Johanna and Minnesota Avenue is scheduled for replacement.
Finish Charlotte Street and then just take a pause, please.
Oh, and Minnesota north to Becker Avenue is not proposed for replacement, and that's based on input received from the Municipal Utilities and the collaboration between engineering staff and utility staff.
Okay, thank you. We have a member of the public here who wishes to address the Charlotte Street, and they do have an interpreter present. And so is there some public comments that they wish to make?
Yes, I will be right back. I'll be heading out.
Just talking to him.
Ah, bueno, esta programada Charlotte Street. Yo vivo en el 510 de Charlotte Street.
Okay, me da como sos. So I see that Charlotte Street is being addressed. I live on, I live on, what is it?
510.
510. That's the home address.
Entonces, yo considero que esa parte, lo que es de Minnesota a la Trot, esa parte de Charlotte Street está bien.
I'm considering that the part of Minnesota to Trot Avenue, that that area is okay or looks okay.
Donde tiene problema es de Trot a la Becker.
What I see that where there's an issue is between Trot and Becker Avenue?
Ese es donde yo he visto que tiene problema la calle.
That's where I see that the road maybe needs some repair or some construction?
Entonces, yo considero que el, en mi área, lo que es de Minnesota a Trot, considero que está bien esa área.
So I consider from Minnesota to Trot, which is the area where my house is located, I believe that that area on that street is okay.
Okay. And then the name for the record, please.
¿Cómo se llama?
Ricardo Aviles Mungia.
I'm Jeanette Morales.
So six, the address is 610?
510.
510?
510, Charlotte Street. Charlotte Street.
510.
510 Charlotte.
Charlotte Street.
And it was Ricardo, no last name?
¿Qué es su apellido?
Aviles.
Aviles. A-V-I-L-E.
L.
S.
Thank you.
Okay, so Jared, can you address that section, please?
Yeah, so as the project, and just so I'm clear, it's Minnesota to Trot that he indicated that he feels is in good, better condition.
Right, right.
So as we evaluated that as an overall project area, you'll, yes, you'll note that that section of the street is right in the middle of the entire length of that project. And what we're, as staff, what we discuss is trying to make sure that we encompass project areas from a good termination location to a good starting location so that if we do improvements on both ends of the, of the, so for example, from Johanna to Minnesota and from Trot to Becker, we do those improvements, then in the future, which isn't that far in the future, although it might appear to be in better condition, the utilities are still the same vintage under that section. When we do that, if we were to delay that section, then as the construction traffic runs over the new streets to get to that section in the middle, you really reduced your, your overall pavement life because of that heavy construction traffic, too. So we're really trying to take an approach where we evaluate the utilities based on their age, and we really take care of that entire section. Although the pavement might look a little bit better, it's still deficient and it still needs to be replaced based on our analysis as a staff.
Could you go back one screen, please? And then the next screen.
Backwards or forwards?
Backwards, please. Okay, I'll go forward again. Additional follow-up questions, ma'am?
No, no tengo pregunta. Era mi inquietud que esa, yo decía que esa sección estaba bien, pero...
No, I'm not, I don't really have a lot of, any questions. It just, I just was, it was unsettling that that area in front of my home needed repairs or needs to be fixed. I just didn't see the need for that.
And you understand now, we do it so that we make sure we don't have construction traffic drive over it after it's already been fixed, which will make the useful life less time. So it's going to make your street last even longer. That's the reason we're doing it.
Sí, entiendo.
Okay, yes, I do understand.
Follow-up questions?
No, no, ya, pues entiendo que a lo mejor lo van a tener.
We'll continue our report then, but please stick around in case there's questions from the council.
Okay.
Jared, go ahead with your, continue your report, please.
All right. Yes.
You were on drainage, I think.
Oh, I was. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so drainage as it relates to Charlotte, essentially the storm sewer, where it exists is where it's proposed to go back in with new piping and structures. Typical section, as you'll see here, Charlotte exists as 36 feet wide, and that's what is proposed to be reconstructed at with the same pavement section. Industrial Drive Service Road, sanitary sewer improvements, again, very similar to the other ones that we've just talked about. The sewer exists. It's proposed to be replaced essentially in the same location with new piping and structures. Water main improvements have been identified between Airport Road and Trot. Drainage improvements, this is another section of the project or of the reconstruction projects that we've identified for some additional drainage improvements during rain events. That area is definitely lacking, and you'll notice where the significant pavement deterioration is. That's where water sits during rain events. So with these improvements, that'll take care of those drainage concerns. And again, the typical section for the roadway and industrial drives identified as 24 feet face to face, which is the existing width. So that is a summary of the improvements associated with the reconstruction projects. I'll jump into the mill and overlay portions, which are identified in blue on the screen. And as I mentioned, it's First Street or Business 71, 19th Street, and then 7th Street are the project areas. Mill and overlay projects, much more straightforward, much more simple. They go much more quickly just simply because of the amount of work that's required. Essentially, in the mill and overlay project, the curb and gutter that's deficient will be identified for removal and replacement. That'll be removed, replaced. The top three inches of bituminous will be milled off with a machine. The three inches that are removed will be replaced with bituminous. So it's a pretty, pretty straightforward process and goes quickly compared to, relative to reconstruction. Parking lot improvements, I'll go into next. Sperryville Parking Lot, there has been some conversations about adjusting some of these improvements, but ultimately what's planned is a new parking lot, some new concrete sidewalk. There's some storm sewer reconstruction that's needed. Public Works staff has had some maintenance, maintenance opportunities with that storm sewer, so that's definitely needed to be replaced. And then some bituminous pavement removal in that location. Fire Department Parking Lot, you'll notice that the north side and south sides of the parking lot are identified as a potential parking lot improvement. One thing I will draw your attention to, in the northeast corner near the entrance to the fire hall, there is some roof leader that comes off the roof, can create some ponding of water, icing, things of that nature. Storm sewer exists within that parking lot. What's being proposed is simply to extend a pipe with a catch basin to pick that water up so that it eliminates that ponding on the pavement and thereby extends the pavement life. 7th Street Parking Lot, pretty straightforward, just a parking lot reconstruction there. Estimated project costs are broken down there by each specific project: 13th and Litch, approximately 1.5 million; 6th Street, 2.5; Charlotte, 1.5; Industrial Drive Service Road, 1.25; Sperryville Parking Lot, about 270,000; Fire Department Parking Lots, 314,000; 7th Street, 166,000; 19th Avenue and Lakeland Drive Mill and Overlay, 1.36 million; First Street, Business 71 Mill and Overlay, 1.33 million; and then 7th Street, estimated project cost of 809,000, for a total of approximately 11 million. This slide simply shows a breakdown of the components associated with the projects, broken out by street reconstruction, which is approximately 3.55 million. The total storm sewer associated with all the projects is estimated at 656,000. Sanitary sewer, approximately 1.27 million, similar to the water main, 1.27 million. Parking lot estimated cost is approximately 750,000. And then the mill and overlay projects that we discussed are approximately 3.5 million. This is just a further breakdown by the project of the costs associated with each component. You'll note that street reconstruction, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities portion of the water main, city portion of the water main, parking lots, and then mill and overlay. So it's just further breakdown of the, of the slide that we just reviewed. Into the anticipated funding sources, one of the, the first, first funding source identified is the assessments that's common on all the projects City of Wilmer has completed over the past numerous years. State aid participation, since City of Wilmer is a state aid city, we do receive funds on an annual basis for improvements to state aid roads only. County participation, specifically as it relates to that 7th Street project, Wilmer Municipal Utilities, city's wastewater funds, local option, sales tax. And that's specific to only the storm sewer that is new storm sewer. It's not for a replacement of storm sewer, but simply to improve drainage for the entire storm sewer system within the city. So it's only the new piping, not the old stuff that's being replaced as part of the reconstruction, but it's the addition. I wanted to make sure that that was understood. And then, of course, city funds, whether that be bonding or other. This is a further breakdown of the assessments associated with each project, the state aid participation. You'll note that the state aid participation, as I mentioned, only applies to the state aid routes that are being improved, which in this case is 19th Avenue and Lakeland Drive and First Street or Business 71. So those are two state aid routes that the city has. So state aid funds have been identified for that. County funding, again, as I mentioned, for 7th Street. And then in the reconstruction areas, there's a municipal utilities component, wastewater. And then specific to the local option, sales tax, you'll see what portion of those projects are eligible for that additional storm sewer, which has been identified as a lost funding source. Assessment breakdown, just by project type or property type, rather, you'll notice that the private properties have been identified. City properties also get assessed per the policy. State properties exist along the improvement area and then county properties. So in summary, private properties of the approximately 11.1 million dollar total project, approximately 2.35 million dollars in assessments to private properties. City properties, 567,000. State properties, about 22,000, and county properties, 49,000. So the total anticipated assessments for the entire projects is just shy of $3 million on an overall 11 million dollar project. Assessments, this is a estimate of the impact of the assessments associated with the improvements. And we have a range here, and simply that's because of the very, the different projects that exist. Not each street is identical in its reconstruction, so we've provided a range. One thing I did want to point out, these numbers will be definitively determined once we receive bids for the project. So at this point, this is just an estimate of the impact of the assessments. Once we get the bids in, we'll be able to calculate. to calculate this for each individual property. So for the street reconstruction portion, uh, we've identified a, a range of $67 to $87 approximately, and that's per foot. Um, so ultimately, if there's a hundred-foot lot and the rate was $67, it'd be $6,700. So that's, that's an idea of how that's calculated. Sanitary sewer reconstruction, 17 to 27 dollars a foot. And sanitary sewer services, um, per the policy, each individual service is assessed 100% to the, um, individual property owner that receives it. Uh, so the sanitary sewer services have been estimated between approximately 500 and 730 dollars each. Water main reconstruction, 12 dollars, uh, to 40 dollars per linear foot. And then the water services, we've identified as one inch and six inch. One inch is the typical size for residential homes. Six inch is the service size for most commercial or industrial, um, buildings. So that's why we've separated those two out. Storm sewer reconstruction between nine and 20 dollars a foot, and then mill and overlay, somewhere between 42 and 65 dollars a foot. And you'll note that that 2.995 million, again, matches, matches the slide that we previously reviewed. Project schedule, I want to discuss the anticipated project schedule. Um, we've broken that down into reconstruction and mill and overlay projects. Uh, ultimately, the preliminary engineering, engineering report was presented in December. Uh, we're at the public hearing now. Open house, you'll notice on there, uh, one thing staff has discussed is holding an open house for the residents along these projects in an effort to better communicate, um, anticipated what they can expect during construction, right? There's a lot of things that come up, a lot of moving parts. Uh, people often have questions about trees and sprinkler systems and dog fences and things of that nature, and we see the open house as an opportunity to, um, provide that information upfront, have a name or a face with a name, if there's questions that come up as, um, throughout construction or even prior, that they can get ahold of me and our staff, and we can certainly address those. So we've identified an open house for February seventeenth. That would be a notice to all the property owners, uh, within those improvement areas. So with that, um, council, we'd be seeking council approval of the plans and specifications on February twenty-second, which would provide for a bid opening on March twenty-third. And, um, at the April fourth meeting of the assessment hearing, uh, resolution could be adopted, which would allow that hearing to be conducted at the first meeting in May with construction starting, um, in May. So construction substantially complete then in October. We've identified middle of October so that we don't run into the, uh, cold weather conditions, um, pavement, some of the things that happen when construction runs late into the fall. And then I did want to point out the construction complete, that last date there. Ultimately, the practice has been that we leave the bituminous wearing course off for one freeze-thaw cycle so that in the event there are any settlements from the pipework, those can be corrected before the final lift of the bituminous goes on. So when the project is finished, finished, you have one uniformed bituminous surface, um, on the, on the, on the ground. Second, uh, project schedule is for the overlay and parking lots. Again, the first two items are, are very much the same. The plans and specifications, um, resolution would be presented to council on March twenty-first. That would allow for a bid opening April nineteenth, uh, call for the public hearing, May second, hold that hearing at, on June sixth, and then construction could start in, in June. Ultimately, the difference that comes in between these two types of projects is, as I noted, related to weather and throughout the presentation. Mill and overlay projects go much more quickly. They're not as weather-sensitive as the, um, reconstruction projects, and the way we've set these schedules up is so that the reconstruction projects can get going as soon as possible with the mill and overlay and parking lots to follow. And with that, Mayor Council, I'll stand for any questions that you might have or the public might have as part of the public hearing. Uh, following the close of the public hearing, there is a resolution in your packets this evening authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications for the improvements described.
Okay. Well, we have heard, uh, comments on Charlotte Avenue. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak from the public? Uh, Mr. DeBlake, please state your name and address for the record. Be Seventh Street.
Seventh, um, I can go over. Uh, Bruce DeBlake, eight twenty-seventh Street Northwest. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My question is on the overlay project. It says it's from, kind of down the letter we got said Park Avenue, the twenty-fourth, County Road twenty-four. I guess I understand that's from Park Avenue to High Avenue. And, um, Park Avenue comes on the Seventh Street Northwest at two different locations.
Right.
We're talking from the south location for the north location.
Mr. Bogey?
Yeah, so the, um, I apologize, it's hard to see on the map. The Seventh Street, um, so Park Avenue, I believe that's the south, um, location, and then it extends up to. It's the north, yeah?
Yeah, it's the north. Yeah, it's right where they came out with Park when they did that Park improvement. Um, when they, they cut in that sanitary sewer near the Park Avenue, the city did, and so it's from that spot to the north.
Okay, you're just, uh... So just after where it was, Park Avenue was cut off, uh, under the Ninth Street construction and to the north from there. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. That answered my question, so.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions from, from, uh, public? We're good on questions? Yes?
I'm just, uh, wondering about Second Street Southeast. That road has been left unrepaired, and is that something that has been considered also?
Yes, so, um, uh, Staff, you want to address that, or you want me to address it?
You know.
So, um, so Second Street Southeast was a project that was bid last year, and it was anticipated that we would be able to get that project to where we had the first lift of the asphalt on it. Uh, that wasn't able to happen because there were some issues with services that were not identified previously to the contractor, and so we had to work with the services, which was the power company, the municipal utilities for the water, and also with minis- uh, with, uh, Center Point Energy for the gas lines. And so that delayed the project because we had to have some clarification on responsibilities. And that project will be completed, hopefully, early spring for the first lift as well. Again, the ware lift will be, will wait till the following year. But, uh, the project on Charlotte Avenue should be to the first lift, uh, by, by the fall, I think you said October, correct? By October fourteenth of next year, it should be, uh, completed to that level.
Of next year?
Of, of twenty, twenty-two.
Twenty, this year?
Yeah, of this year. Yep, yep.
With the car that I did. Yes, I understand that we could run into issues such as that also at any time, but my hope is that we won't be running into that problem with Charlotte.
I believe Staff feels the same way. We have the same concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Additional member, uh, comments from members of the public? And again, we haven't voted yet, so if you want to stick around, uh, for the vote, you can stick around, um, but that's up to you. Additional, uh, questions from the public? With that, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council table. Council, what are your wishes?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive the Wilmer report and order the improvements.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to receive the preliminary report and order the improvements. Council, questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. As it relates to Charlotte Street, do we know when that street was last redone? Whether there was an overlay or when the street was actually reconstructed or constructed?
I'm gonna try to find the age of those utilities in the report. Yeah, it's eight-inch, ten-inch clay tile. Don't have a specific.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six for the overlay. Okay. Yes, water main, ninety-six to two thousand, and that's in that area that is not proposed to be reconstructed.
The street would have been reconstructed also at that time?
Yep, the bituminous. So it's probably two thousand, ninety-six to two thousand is the last time that the pavement surface in that specific area was, was touched.
Okay. I was just curious, 'cause, um, just with the spottiness of the project, if there had been problems or what we had done last time, or, um...
Additional comments or questions? Any comment, uh, councilmember ask?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the, a similar question about the parking lots. Can you give us a rundown on the parking lots and when they were last constructed?
Gary, do you have any idea on the, on the parking lots' age?
I could speak to Seventh Street. That is my third, my tenure with the city has not been reconstructed. And if you notice, that's got the cans from back when they had parking meters still, and that's before my time. So I'm gonna say it's probably fifty years would be a safe bet on the Seventh Street. What was the other parking lot? Oh, the Sperryville Parking Lot? That has not had anything, there's really no parking lot there, to be honest with you. That's just that roadway through there. So that's to improve that park. And just for information, if they decide to add a second pickleball facility, that parking lot will still be in the appropriate place if they do add an additional, um, uh, court there. And then the, uh, the fire department, um, I don't believe there's been any major construction, and there might have been just a little bit of patchwork done when they did the addition on the fire hall, and I can't remember exactly what year that was. I want to say that was in the early nineties. I, I'm guessing on that a little bit, but otherwise, there's been no major rebuild of those parking lots, for sure not the south end, a little bit on that north end, northeast corner there, when they, they added that portion of the fire hall on, then they probably just, it's a patchwork up to it. From the fire hall perspective, that lot is in dire needs. Uh, there's some storm, storm sewer, sewer issues there that should be addressed, so, yeah, I guess that's what I know about the parking lots. I can't give an exact date, but I know for sure that none of that's happened in my time.
All right, thanks. That's very helpful.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I know I've expressed a concern about the location of the parking lot in Sperryville and why we would put it so close to the pickleball courts. I, I do not know where the other pickleball courts would go, but we've got playground equipment very close to the pickleball courts on the other side, and so, um, the other, the other thing, I know we talked about holding off on these, um, parking lots to be able to do some triage to catch up on other things with streets. And so I'll just, um, question that, whether it's crack sealing or some things that, that we're behind on, whether we should be holding off on these for one more year to do, to do some other things, um, that could enhance all streets in our community, so. I, I, two different concerns, I think.
Sure, and I, I understand your concerns about that. I do know that we have a much more aggressive, uh, maintenance program going forward this year that we're working on as far as the seal coat, crack sealing. Um, as far as the location of the parking lot, uh, it was determined through several meetings with staff and, and, uh, Bolton and Mankin stuff that came up with, actually, the, the initial design was done in-house by our prior engineering firm, or staff, I mean, firm, and so we've kind of enhanced it. One of the thoughts was that if, if you notice on Sperryville, but we eliminate the road, um, that would be green space where you, where the road Homewood would go through, and there's an alley there to the west. That alley would be a, a churn left only there, so you'd only could go to the west out of that alley, and that leaves that green space for, for playing and stuff, and not, otherwise, the way it is right now, you are, uh, you're cutting traffic through where you have to park to get to the, to the pickleball courts, you know, like, um, right now, the way it is, the people park along the south side of Homewood Avenue, and kids and stuff are crossing the road as traffic's trying to navigate Homewood, and I don't know if you've been there during a busy time, but, uh, the Sperryville is a very popular spot right now for pickleball players, and I've seen upwards of thirty cars sitting there at one time. So there do, really needs to be some sort of an improvement there. Um, I think the desire to have it close to the pickleball court, I think, is desirable, um, but that's just, you know, an opinion of one person or a committee. There is some play equipment that is still going to be to the south of the existing road. There's a shelter there. We felt it was really relevant not to have a road go between play equipment and a, and a, uh, shelter. And the reason the play equipment was put in the area was is because of, uh, the levelness of the area. It was, uh, planned as that it would allow a parent to play pickleball and still have their children be playing at the playground and kind of do watch both at the same time and not chase them back and forth. So that, I don't know if you're familiar with where the Sperryville Shelter is, that's built in, that's kind of a hill there to, to put play equipment in. The hill makes that a little bit more of a difficult task. So that's kind of my summary of it. Um, as far as the priority of it, um, I guess that's probably, uh, something that as a council, you probably need to decide what you want to do there. We, you know, brought the information forward, and our hopes is that if we don't go forward with it, we still have a plan in place, so when we want to go forward, we've got that much taken care of.
Councilmember Nelson, are you wishing to pull those and make any suggested changes?
I, I appreciate the, the concept of what we're doing, um, with that. I'm just uncomfortable, um, with kind of plan as you go with what seems to have happened there. And so if there is a plan, perhaps the whole plan should be reviewed, um, before that. And so, um, that's my concern. Um... I've struggled with this one from the beginning, so I, yes, I will ask for it to be pulled this year.
Is there a motion to, are you making that motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to pull the Sperryville, Sperryville Park Improvement Discussion. Councilmember Butterfield?
Yeah, we talked about this at the retreat, that we're gonna kind of put a couple of parking lots on hold. We're all in senses on it. We've talked about this two or three times already about... We've talked about this two or three times already about putting the brakes on it. So I think tonight's the night that we put the brakes on this parking lot.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmas?
No.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
No.
Davis?
No.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
No.
We have three ayes, four nays.
The motion fails. We have a motion on the table to approve the, uh, improvement report as presented. Additional comments to the improvement report? Any aspect of the improvement report? Okay, uh, so we have a motion to receive the preliminary report and order the improvements as have been presented at the public hearing, and we have a motion and a second. Again, uh, this takes seven affirmative votes to pass. I guess we'll call, I guess we'll, uh, roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The improvement report is approved. Thank you, Jared, for your work, we really do appreciate it. There's one thing that I wanted to mention, I'd written myself a note, um, but, uh, we need to make sure and let everybody know that the sidewalks and driveways will be replaced as per the bid spec. And, uh, so last year, we ran into a, into a conflict with the exposed aggregate. And so we need to make sure that the public's aware that if they have exposed aggregate driveways or sidewalks, those aren't being replaced that way, they're being replaced as the bids and specs call for, correct?
Understood, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, council.
You bet. Next, we have consideration of public service contract facilities study and architect design. And we'll, uh, call on Mr. Walker for his presentation. Um, we're gonna have staff try to do some arranging here, and so, um... Jared, I think you have to take your presentation down.
No, no.
Oh, maybe not, maybe he's doing it.
Cody can do it.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Hold on, hold on.
Hold on a minute.
Councilmember Osmas, can you do a mic check, please?
Uh, mic check.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, uh, we, we can hear you, so go ahead, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I guess, uh, before, before I get started, I just wanted to hand out the, uh, rubric that we use to, uh, I guess, score the, uh, RFPs we got. All right, so, uh, I guess, uh, this is just pretty much just, just about like the selection of the process tonight. Uh, I left it blank, um, how we scored it, but this is, uh, the rubric that we used, you know, is possible to get seventy-five points. Um, but, uh, so pretty much, we got five proposals. We got five proposals and from, uh, the review process, uh, we talked with staff, and it came away that we decided to go with BKV Group for a bid of twenty-two thousand dollars. I think we were pretty thorough in our assessment of it and our review of the process and every single RFP that we got. There was a lot of, there was a lot of deliberation. Uh, we reviewed these independently and talked over, I think probably about three days, uh, kind of about what we thought of them independently. I think the deciding factor for me was the references. There was one reference that was, I mean, effusive about the praise for BKV, worked with them from start to finish, uh, with someone's in a role similar to mine. They were head of the planning department, they were over the entire process, had autonomy. And he said that BKV, uh, he, if he could choose BKV for every single project that was commissioned by his town for, like, in perpetuity, he would. Uh, and, and other reference checks, it was not the same. I think other people, they had the confidence in other firms, but they were not moved, I guess, they were also kind of, they were also in the planning process, they still hadn't taken things to construction yet. And so I think that's where BKV really separated themselves, and I think also, uh, what we were looking for was, uh, facility needs assessment, the city hall, uh, uh, city hall and, uh, community center. And I think we had some places that really spec, that really specialized in, uh, civic buildings and very beautiful architectural statements. Now, we need, some places didn't excel in facility needs assessments, and then other places excelled in, uh, city halls. I think BKV, for what we were looking for, which were facility needs assessment, uh, city hall and, uh, community center, BKV really excelled in the facility needs assessment and the, uh, city hall design. I think also, um, with the exception, I, I think everyone else, uh, was kind of on par, kind of like the, generally the same price range with thirty-five thousand plus was kind of what they were asking for. BKV's price of twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, was the outlier. I think it was, and I, I even called to confirm that we were on the same page of like what we were asking for. I think that's kind of how surprising it was. Um, ended up not really being a metric, just because of how like the process kind of worked out and what we were kind of thinking, but generally, generally speaking, um, it was really interesting when I called, uh, about a reference for another firm, and they're like, oh, like, who are you working with, and I, or who are you considering? I mentioned BKV, and he was like, oh, well, you should, you should just choose BKV then. So, um, and it wasn't, it wasn't a reference for BKV, it was a reference for another person. So, uh, I think I'm, I'm pretty confident, I, I, I spoke with Bruce today. Uh, he said he'd be here tonight, but he, he already had another council meeting to go to. So he looks forward to meeting you all in the future for, for some, meeting, meeting people again. Um, but yeah, so should be hearing from Bruce tomorrow, kind of start on, getting the schedule together, uh, six to eight months, uh, just kind of pending council approval. So I guess, uh, if you just had any questions, we would be happy to answer them, or, uh, I myself would be happy to answer them.
Okay. Um, I'm looking for a motion to approve the recommendation of staff unless we want to have discussion first. It's up to council what you wish to do.
Just a question, who is BKV and where are they from?
So BKV is, uh, architectural firm group. They specialize in facility needs assessments and city halls and, uh, I guess technically law enforcement centers. Uh, but it's firm architects, they're a national firm with a footprint in, uh, in Minneapolis, but they've done plenty of work outside in greater metro, uh, in greater Minnesota. I think that was like another qualification that I think we were very sensitive to. I think we had other places that had metro footprints and didn't really venture out into greater Minnesota. And, uh, I think BKV had a wealth of experience in greater Minnesota as well that made us feel comfortable with working with them.
Councilmember Ask?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said that there were seventy-five points possible in the metric. Can you, um, tell us what all five firms scored as you went through the metric?
Oof. So, uh, I guess, I can't really give you that because like we, it's not like we averaged them. I think we all ended up with them independently. I think we had consensus about what our top two were, uh, and from there, we moved forward. So like I said, it wasn't like we averaged them, I had like a total points, um, I would say like, be, uh, it was, uh, BKV and H, HGA that I think really kind of separated themselves as far as like stylistically and from like the scoring perspective. I think we had others, um, there was like some variance in like the three through five. Uh, I think even myself, I think, um, as far as like the, the score, um, my score kind of, my score for, for two kind of varied, but I think stylistically, I think we all agreed on, um, the top two. So if we would have averaged them, I'd probably be able to give that to you, but we, we didn't. Like I said, we, we reviewed them independently and then, and then just kind of had like a lot of dialogue about it.
So just so I understand, I think I, I think I do from what you're saying, but the team went through, scored the points individually, then there was a, a time when you came together, had conversation, and people offered what their preferences were, but at no point did you ever accumulate the scores that you each had?
No, so what we did was we sat down, uh, we hammered out each metric and said, and kind of decided what would go into each score, and then we kind of went through it, agreed on, uh, that half points could be given, what, uh, the total points could be, and then made sure that, um, we also accounted for multipliers with certain metrics as well, and, um, kind of made sure there was an understanding amongst staff about what we were looking for, and then I think, uh, reviewed them independently, and then we had like a meeting about it several days later to kind of talk about like what we thought, like what our scores were, and went through each one. Um, I didn't catalog them, I, I guess, mine were digital, somewhere, but.
Thank you.
Good administrative, Valiant.
Yes, I just wanted to remind the council, BKV is group is also the architect that, uh, you had chosen for in twenty nineteen for the city hall design architect at that time, too. So this is the same company that was previously, um, given the architectural design for the city hall.
Councilmember Nelson.
Um, thank you. With, um, having been part of that, we, I mean, we spent a lot of time doing that, and so I appreciate the work that you've put into it. I'm just curious, who was the team that you're talking about that evaluated this, besides yourself?
Uh, myself, uh, Coyote, Coyote Ariatu, and, uh, Willard Hike.
The planning development.
So were you part of the?
No.
Process? Okay.
I'm still, I'm still at a loss for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to authorize the mayor and administrator to enter into a professional services agreement with the chosen firm from the facility's RFP process.
Sir?
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we had hired them before in twenty nineteen, they probably have a lot of information and data already? That's probably why their bid came in lower?
No.
They didn't do any work?
No, you didn't do anything, you tabled it because of COVID.
Okay.
So actually, it was twenty-twenty, you had it on the, in, and you approved it. The contract to be signed did not come into the, uh, for signing until May. I believe you approved them as the architect in February. The May, the contract took that long to get finalized, and, um, Mr. Grammets held it because, due to COVID, and didn't know where that was gonna go. And so they held off, you held off on signing any of that contract.
Okay. So they've never done anything?
No, they've not.
Event Center or anything like?
No, the, uh, yeah, the event center was, uh, is, uh, LSE.
LSE.
Thank you.
Councilmember, uh, O'Brien.
So did you actually, your, your team didn't go out and visit any of the places that they have built? Or that they have?
No, I think with the expedite timeline, I think had, uh, if we had like a little more time, I think, on the RFP and not so much of a workload with the daily planning needs, uh, I think we probably could have done tours. I think we probably could have even done interviews of people as well, but I think just with kind of, uh, our, our location, I think the location of the firms, and I think just kind of demands on our time, um, from the daily, from the daily planning standpoint, it didn't really make that possible. But I think that's, um, that was kind of, that, that was recommended on like the backend, um, like from some of the people in the references that I talked to of, that'll be a part of the process in the early parts of discovery of kind of what we like, things we don't like. Um, will be a tour of facilities that they have built, tour of facilities in the region, uh, that we can kind of get perspective of what features and characteristics we like these buildings to have.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Um, I remember when we did these, um, interviews before, they did spend, um, they spent a lot of time putting the presentation together, they did homework on this community, as I'm guessing, um, looking at the other names, too, and so, um, um, it's, it's a little, I don't know, it's a little, it certainly is a different process than we used the last time. We were very careful, and we looked at the bids, and we looked at their, their, um, their presentations, et cetera. Um, the fact that you don't have the scores recorded for, um, just public, I know this is coming as your recommendation, and I respect that, and, you know, we chose this company once before. Um, um, it's just a different process.
Additional comments or questions? Okay, a motion has been made to enter into a professional services agreement, contract for city facilities study and architectural design with BKV Group. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien? Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Thank you for the work and your staff's work. I know you guys have a full plate, and, uh, I know that, uh, you're trying to get ramped up with a building official and a building inspector and a rental inspector, and having this on your plate, too. I know that you guys are challenged by it, but I really look forward to the work that you're gonna bring forward because, uh, I love the enthusiasm of your department. You guys are doing awesome work, so keep it up. I'm very proud of you guys.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think, uh, we, we look forward to getting work started, uh, with Bruce as soon as possible, and then I think, um, updating council is, uh, necessary. Thank you.
You bet, thank you. Yes, keep us posted. Next, we have consideration of a search brochure for the city operations director, and I'll start with our city administrator, Ms. Valiant.
Yes, good evening, council. Uh, we do have Patty Hamonayver on the phone, so I will, and you have the brochure that Patty has, uh, developed for the city operations director. And in parentheses, you see assistant city administrator, and I will turn it over to Patty so she can, uh, explain what her thoughts are on this brochure. Patty, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity for, um, discussing the brochure with you. I had a great opportunity to meet with Leslie and Luanne in great detail. Uh, uh, um, two of us, it was, um, Ms. Clump and myself matched with, um, Leslie to talk a little bit more in-depth about the, the city operations director. And, uh, just to get a really full understanding of what you were looking for in this position. And one thing that, um, we were a little concerned about is the actual title of the position. We understand what the job is all about, and one of the things is for marketing purposes, one of the things that we suggested, suggesting, um, Sharon and I, is possibly underneath the city operations director, put like, um, assistant city administrator or deputy city administrator. And the reason for that is, is only for marketing purposes. Um, this is a, a great position for someone, but when we go out to market, we're, we're putting this information out to hundreds and hundreds of people. And we want to attract them within the first five to ten seconds of them looking at any of our publications that's out there. If it's the, um, the brochure, if it's an ad that we put out there, if it's an email, if it's, um, a call, and we're talking about the position, they may not relate to what a city operations director, where that falls in to the organization, in the organization chart. So Sharon and I would be suggesting that you put assistant city administrator or deputy city administrator to be able to attract people to apply for the position. So that was one thing that we thought we would suggest that you would consider doing for marketing purposes only. We did not change anything in the job description, um, anything to do with that. Um, it's only to attract, um, good quality people.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council, any questions on that?
Councilmember Nelson.
That's what's on our, our copy tonight, so what she's recommending is already on here, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Ms. Hemmonover, thank you for the work that you've done for us in the past. You've done excellent work for us, and I understand what your concerns and your questions are here. Just a question, so if it said City Operation Director or Community Operation Director, would that mean anything different to you as a professional?
I know where you're going with that, Mayor. The concern that we have is we may not capture the people that are trying to get to that next level, which is the Assistant City Administrator position. Meaning this is the second position in control underneath the City Administrator. Even though we have labeled that in about three different places throughout the brochure, people aren't going to look at that and say, oh gee, that's going to make any difference. I would rather put on Assistant City Administrator and have someone question it and give me or give Sharon a call and say, could you explain a little bit more about this position? Which then would just enough be to explain. I have a feeling that a City Operations Director may not indicate that that is the second in command, that's underneath the Administrator. And this is what we're trying to do is to highlight that so they understand that's the position that we're advertising is an Assistant City Manager, but the actual title, title of this position is City Operations Director.
Thank you. Council, is there anyone who wishes to make a motion? Uh, Councilmember Osmus.
I was just wondering if we could switch the two around then and put Assistant City Administrator, and then in parentheses, put the Project Manager title. So that, that maybe then opens up the question that this is a little bit different of Assistant City Administrator position. But I agree with the, with the thought that people were more likely to look at the position when it's clear that it's the second in command.
Anybody that wishes to make a motion?
I'll make that motion to adopt a resolution.
Motion been made and seconded to adopt a resolution. I think it's a simple motion on the.
I was on the wrong side, sorry.
Simple motion, and did you want to, okay, to accept the city, the, sir, I'm having trouble tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Operations Director's search brochure.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded by Councilmember Osk. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Osk.
Trying to remember what page this says, but it says the position is open until filled. First review of resumes occurs on, when does it occur? Last.
Thank you. That's a very good question. The reason that that is not filled in until after they, they've approved the brochure. Once the brochure is approved, we will then go advertise for at least a month.
So we approve it today, they'll advertise for at least 30 days.
So we'll be looking mid-February when you do your first review of resumes?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
And Ms. Hemmonover, excuse me, would you respond to Councilmember Osmus's question? I was wondering the same thing. Any advice on, on switching the, the title in, in parentheses and the title before the parentheses?
That does not matter which, which comes first, if it's the Assistant City Administrator or the City Operations Director, whenever you feel comfortable.
Councilmember Osmus. Councilmember Osmus, yep.
I, I feel that they should get switched because then it's, 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 it seems like it's more prominent, and it's out there that it's an Assistant City Administrator position. So that's my recommendation. My other question was, and I don't have it, I can't bring it up in front of me, but there was some pictures, one of them looked like it was an overhead shot of possibly Jennie O. It was, it was, it was industrial area.
I believe that's a picture of the unique apartment complex.
Okay.
I don't think that's Jennie.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Actually, it's the Preserve. It's not Unique, it's the Preserve over by Walmart.
Okay. I didn't see the value in that picture, and I, I just thought there could be a better picture in, that was more about the community that had more appeal than that overhead shot.
I think that overhead shot shows that there's development happening, and it shows our commercial growth area. And I think that's probably what they're trying to capture there, is that there's things happening. But I'll let Ms. Hemmonover answer that question.
I, I think if, if that was the purpose, then I would see, say like, like the construction of the apartment complex from ground level to see buildings. That overhead shot didn't do anything for me.
Ms. Hemmonover?
That's exactly what we were trying to do, is to capture some development that was going on in the community. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, you're kind of, you're kind, you have a lot of background noise.
Yeah. Okay, we were trying to find a picture that would illustrate your development, so we can go back and look for another picture.
Mr. Walker, can you help her with that, do you think?
Yeah, we've got other ones. We've got the Unique Opportunities, the apartments with the, two apartments already built with the three and four being under construction.
That's just my opinion. I would, I just, if anybody else disagreed or agreed, I was just opening it up for discussion.
How do other people feel about the picture or changing the picture?
There's, just clarification, there's two overhead pictures, so I don't find them, I mean, I find, find them intriguing, and if I was looking at it, I would probably look some more with that. So I, I think they do accomplish development in there and industrial, so I'm not sure which photo we're addressing.
The Unique Opportunities Apartment Complex is on the very back page, under the three banners.
One by Walmart.
Unique is column five. I believe the one that Julie's talking about is on page three, under Community Title. And that's the Preserve.
Yes, it was one of the first ones, and it had some people on the right side, I believe.
Yes, you're correct. That's the Preserve is.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the dental clinic, it's Taco, Taco Bell, it's PetSmart, Hub Foods, all of that. And the north side of it is KC. You're not really feeling the love here tonight, Julie. People are kind of thinking we're going to stay with where we're at, so. Are you okay with that? Patty, can you feel doubt you're having a lot of background noise? Okay, go ahead, Julie. Councilmember Osmus.
I, I can live with it. I just, I'm, I'm a more color visual person, and that was just my opinion, that's fine.
Councilmember Nelson.
I was just going to speak to, I think we need to stay with City Operations Director. That's what our job description said. We walked through that, we were careful with why we chose that over Assistant City Administrator. I'm fine with the categorizing of it so that people are intrigued to come and check out, you know, to, to categorize it under the, under both, both types of things, I'm fine with that. But I would like to see us stay with City Operations Director because that's what our job description says.
It would take a friendly amendment to, to change it, too. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Personally, when I see Director, oh, I'm going to be in charge of something. And then you see Assistant, I'm not going to be in charge. So, and is there a higher salary for a Director than an Assistant?
In this case, they'd be equal.
It was scored off the point system.
Yeah, but for me, I would prefer Assistant City Administrator because that's what it is. That's me.
So I would entertain a motion if someone wished to make a motion on switching those two names around, and then through the document, we'd just have to update it.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded to switch the name to Assistant City Administrator, and then in parenthesis, City Operations Director. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
So we're just going to put that on the brochure, and then when we hire someone, we're going to go back to the job description we approved? I'd say no, I'm voting no.
Councilmember Osmus.
I feel like that gets the first glance, so at least they, they look at it because of that job title, and then the job description explains what it is we want that position to do. So I don't think there's any confusion about that. To me, the, the, the thing we need to be looking at is what's going to grab their attention and get them to look at it and consider it. And so I think switching it is, gives us that.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Patty, if I understand correctly, by putting this on there, you are already going to put it in that category that people will see this under Assistant City Administrator. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Additional comments or questions?
We're going to advertise, we're going to advertise this in all the major organizations, and we will be sending it out electronically to hundreds of people.
Additional comments or questions? Okay, roll call. For approval of this, I'm sorry, roll call for the amendment to change from City Operations Director to Assistant City Administrator on the posting. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Davis?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
No.
Four ayes, three nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have a consideration of a search brochure for City Assistant City Administrator. Additional discussion, roll call. I'm sorry, roll call. Did you have a question?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'm confused. The job description we approved, this is the brochure, so we're approving the brochure, not to hire an Assistant City Administrator, but to hire the job that we approved as the City Operations Director. But what we're approving right now is just approving the brochure, right?
We're approving the advertising for the selection of an Assistant City Administrator to serve under the City Administrator at the direction of the council.
So we are changing the position?
No. No.
Just the marketing.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember, Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resoluce, that motion passes. Ms. Hemmonover, thank you for the work that you've put into this. I know that, I'm sure knowing how you work, you're already working on trying to find us some qualified candidates, so we're looking forward to this moving rather quickly. And as Councilmember Osk stated, by the middle of next month, we should be having our first review of candidates. So look forward to how you suggest that we move forward with those interviews. And as you know, the council wants to be involved pretty heavily on that interview process. So any additional comments, Ms. Hemmonover?
Thank you very much. We'll start making the changes tomorrow. We will get an updated brochure to Leslie in the morning, and then we'll go out and start advertising as quickly as tomorrow afternoon.
Great, awesome. We're, we are excited. This is going to be a great position. Whoever applies for this and is selected for this will have a lot of work to do, and I met with a City Administrator today, and we went out and met with Jennie O., and we've got a lot of exciting things on the horizon for the city, and this will be an excellent position. So go forth and get us a great candidate, we're excited. Next.
We're excited to work with you, and thank you so much. You're absolutely right, this is a great opportunity for a lot of, a lot of city people, so I think we're going to get some really good candidates.
Awesome, thank you so much. Now, you can stick around for the rest of our meeting, or you can go forward and do whatever you do that's fun, so we expect to see you drop off quickly. So have a great evening. Next, we have consideration of memorandum of agreement for water mains and fire hydrants with Wilmer Municipal Utilities. Mr. Manz, our interim Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This, this is a recommendation and a change of an agreement that was made between the city and MUC for the care of our water mains and fire hydrants. Met, personally met myself with John Heron, and we discussed this past year about water main breaks and repairs to the city, and this last year they had, this last summer, I guess would have been 2021, yeah, I got to get back. 2021 summer, they had an extreme amount of water main breaks in the road. They had hired a contractor with the private, the previous agreement, the utilities was responsible to put the street back the way it was before they dug it up. And so anyways, in our discussion, they have hired us to do it before, so we've actually patched these things for many years. Last year's probably one of the first years that we had a contractor patch those cuts, and some of those cuts got delayed in getting done, and didn't get done till the end of the year. We were driving one over them all summer. I talked to John, I said, to me, it seemed a little bit cumbersome the way this agreement worked. They flush hydrants and take care of the water mains. They dictate to us what hydrants need repair, we come and repair them. When they flush them, we come behind and make sure they drain, and we lube them and get them ready for winter when they're right there. I said, John, it seems like there's five of us working on one hydrant, we need to streamline this a little bit. Street patching is more in our wheelhouse. Felt it was a smoother transition if they just took care of the fire drains, fire hydrants. We take care of the street patching as it is now. When they dig up a street, we monitor it all winter and spring until we can get asphalt in there. So we're kind of taking care of it the way it is, so it would be just kind of a switch over responsibilities, that the street patching would be ours, even on the water. would be ours, even on the water main cuts, and they would take care of all the maintenance and flushing of the hydrants outside of the painting, which the Fire Department has historically been the ones painting fire hydrants, and I think that's going to remain the same. The city will still be responsible for the replacement of the fire hydrants through street projects, that'll be coming on the city's side as it has in the past. The city's always been responsible for the replacement of hydrants in street projects, and that's added into the projects. So I guess, in a nutshell, it's, I think it's streamlining government a little bit, and it's, from my perspective, it's a win for the city, and I think it's a win for the utilities, so I would recommend that we could move forward with this agreement, but I'd stand for any questions.
Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Motion been made and seconded to approve an agreement, a memorandum of agreement between the Wilmer Municipal Utilities and the city for water main and fire hydrant repair and maintenance. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gary, did we ever buy a backhoe?
Yes.
I remember Councilman Halterman would bring it up every year.
Yeah, we bought a backhoe in 2018.
Okay, just three years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have acknowledgment of donations for the third and fourth quarter. Ms. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, occasionally, we receive donations from various people throughout the community, and we acknowledge those typically quarterly. The list that I'm about to read off are for the third and fourth quarter of 2021. The first one is $6,311 from the 100 Yard Club toward goalposts at the new recreation turf fields. $6,311 from Cardinal Pride toward the goalposts at the new recreation turf fields. $686 Wilmer Baseball Fast Pitch Boosters Association for the pitching mound. $100 Francis Hendershot, Wilmer Police Explorers Program and Emergency Response Team. $150 Canoe High County Corn and Soybean Growers Association for Fire Department Safety Equipment. $200 from Roma Fosterold for the Wilmer Police Explorers Program and Emergency Response Team. $1,500 from the Stingers toward Wilmer Baseball LLC, toward field improvements at Swanson and Baker complexes. $50 from Hormel Jennie O. Turkey Store for Drive Up and Treat Halloween Event. $150 from Walt's Car Wash for the Drive Up and Treat Halloween Event. $25 from Ridgewater Athletics Program for the Drive Up and Treat Halloween Event. $200 from Dooley's Petroleum for the Drive Up and Treat Halloween Event. $500 from Rick and Tracy Clark for the Ryan Clark Fund, this would be towards the Police Explorers Program. $50 from Perkins Lumber for the Drive Up and Treat Halloween Event. $100 from Shelley Homequist for the Drive Up and Treat Halloween Event. $120 from Reverend David Rogers for the Drive Up and Treat Halloween Event. $80 from Harriet Carlson for the Police Explorers Program in memory of Carl Jones. $100 from Burt Drist Lumber for Use in Community Center Woodshop. $200 from Beverly Falk for the Fire Department to be used at their discretion. $150 from Rick and Tracy Clark for the Ryan Clark Fund for the Police Explorers Program. $100 from Ucare for the Drive Up and Treat Halloween Event. $600 from Vista Prairie at Copperleaf for Curbside Crafts event at Community Center. $250 from Coburns Incorporated for the Police Department Wilmer Area Community Emergency Response Team. $100 from Erlene Schulstad for the Police Explorers Program. $500 from Iron Warriors MC for the Fire Explorers Program. $3,000 an anonymous donor for the Police Department Safety Equipment. And $600 from Ag Country Farm Credit Services for Wilmer Fire Explorers.
Okay, I think the donation for the Police Explorer Program was for Carol Jones, not Carl, I believe.
I think it was Carol Jones, it was a typo, I believe.
Oh, okay, ours said Carol, okay, so it's a typo?
Yeah.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? I'll look for a motion.
Second?
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion. Are we normally, I thought we normally were going to get these on our every-quarter basis? Are we going to...
They're supposed to be received every quarter. I'm unsure of how, I was just asked to read them off, so they're received through our Finance Department and the Administrator's Office. So they lump the two quarters together.
Okay, yeah, I thought that we were supposed to get them quarterly, I thought is what the council directive was, but, okay, the motion's been made and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have consideration of a January 24th work session to talk about bonding. Ms. Valiant?
Yes, Council, this evening, you heard about the street improvements and approved the construction documents to be started with both in Mink. Now, funding those projects is now the next concern, and so we thought it would be best to have a bonding workshop, so that our Doug Green from Baker Tilly could facilitate that and have some discussion as to how we would be moving those projects forward, whether it would be continuing in our best interest to continue with a 10-year bond, maybe, or a 15-year bond, knowing that the rates are, and then this is, these projects are more than what has been done in the past also. So, we felt that it would be nice to have that more local discussion on the bonding and how it all works, and how it all plays out in the future for budgeting-wise and such. And we had come up with January 31st as, because it was the fifth Monday of the month, but the mayor has said that the 24th would work better. So that's why the 24th is on the table also.
So, Council, what are your wishes?
Either one works for me.
Neither one? Or either one?
Either one.
Either one works?
It's a smash.
Okay, yeah. Councilmember Ask?
The 24th does not work for me, the 31st would.
Okay.
I have a late afternoon commitment on the 24th. I would probably be able to get here, but I could be late, but I was late tonight.
Additional comments? Looking for a motion, then.
Yeah, just a clarification, the 31st does not work? Or you preferred the 20? I'm just trying to clarify. Who could be there?
I will not be there on the 31st, but we have the council members that won't be there on the 24th. But I think the bonding hearing needs to happen, we need this update, the council has to receive the information. You know, the Administrator and I have been talking about this for quite some time, of getting this done. You know, we have been trying to do things to get more street work done. You know, we really missed a window of opportunity over the last two years with low bond rates, and I certainly don't want us to miss another window of opportunity on bonding. You know, so, so I just want, you know, Mr. Green to get here to be able to present his information. You know, I may be able to call in that evening, but I will not physically be in Wilmer, I'm out of town that day. I'm out of town that whole weekend, spending time with my grandson and daughter-in-law.
Just a clarification, I've asked a question about hybrid meetings, so is it possible to do this as a hybrid meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
And what are the requirements for a hybrid? I mean, do we have to make a motion to do hybrid meetings, or?
No, we do not. We just have to be able to see you on, visibly see you during the meeting.
So what you have to do is...
And we have to post where you're going to be located, so that the public, and you put a posting at your residence, or wherever you are, that you are in a public's meeting at this point in time, so people can come to your place and listen in on the council meeting.
So, I guess, I understand that procedure, if you're like on vacation, or you're gone kind of thing.
Still would hold true at home.
There isn't a different procedure that would allow us to do hybrid meetings?
It's the same.
For COVID reasons?
Yes. Well, this is not a COVID, this...
I understand that, but if someone had something come up in the middle of the day that they couldn't be here?
No.
That's what I was asking for clarification.
No, you can't.
I wasn't sure if there were other options, because I know there are other communities that are doing it, so I'm curious with how they're doing it.
The way our rules are established, and Mr. Scott, I'm going to need some help here, the way our rules are set up is that you need to notify the Administrator, the city attorney, the mayor, if you are going to be absent, and that you wish to attend remotely, and then that is posted on the meeting posting with a three-day notice. And then, so if something happens that afternoon that doesn't work, because we don't meet the three-day notice, but otherwise, my understanding is the way that the policy is written, is that you just have to make that available. Mr. Scott, please help me with some clarification.
Certainly, Mayor, members of the council, there is basically two ways that a council can have a hybrid meeting. One way is what we're doing tonight with Councilmember Osmus, where you do just what the mayor mentioned, you post notice where the council member will be attending from, identifying the address. That location then needs to be accessible to any member of the public who would like to watch the council member participate in the meeting from that location. That's, I think, the request of council members, is if you wish to attend a meeting that way, that you provide at least a week's notice to staff, so they can get the technological arrangements set up. The second way, right now, a council could meet in a hybrid meeting, would be to invoke the authority that exists for cities to meet when it's impractical for everyone to meet in one location due to the pandemic. That's the way the council met entirely remotely, or in a hybrid setting for many months during the, kind of the worst of the pandemic. I do know there are cities, especially now with the recent surge, that have gone back to either entirely or hybrid remote meetings. That is an option that requires the mayor, Administrator, or myself, or all of us preferably, to make a determination that a hybrid meeting is necessary, or that it's necessary for at least some members to attend remotely. I do believe that the, at least for the time being, the current situation would justify that, so I do think that's an option for the council. Don't think you need to make a motion, we would just need some direction from, the consensus from the council that it's something you want to do, or a determination made by the mayor. The mayor is empowered by statute to make that determination, as is the City Administrator and myself.
Additional comments or questions? Looking for a motion. Make a motion for the 31st.
Somebody? I'll make a motion for the 31st. What time works?
6:30 is what I have in the motion.
At the fire station?
At the fire hall, yes.
Second?
Motion been made and seconded, we have a meeting on January 31st, 6:30 PM, at the Wilmer Fire Station, to review bond council recommendations and be informed on bonding. Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. So, staff will get that information out, and then I'll get you the address of where I'll be, so I'll attend remotely.
Perfect.
So, for Community Pride announcements, we have a lot of great things happening within our community. Get involved, be involved, and I just want to remind everybody that on the radio today, I heard that there are over 330 people in Canoe High County that have COVID currently, and those are the ones that have sought medical care, or have been tested, so that we know that that's the number. There are probably many more times that actually have COVID, that haven't went into a medical facility. So, please, as you, as your discretion follows you, wear your mask, become vaccinated, and protect those around you. Again, this is not a mandate, this is not, this is just something that the mayor is recommending. So, thank you very much, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
You are adjourned.